The January 9, 2020 meeting of the Princeton Planning Board is called to order.
Speaker, please.
Speaker, yes, speaking to my.
Okay, I'll say that again, the January 9, 2020 meeting of the Princeton Planning Board is called to order. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by promptly posting the 2020 Agenda Resolution for the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained through the year and by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof the Clerk of Princeton on the 8th day of November 2019. Legal notice of the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 20, 2019 edition of the Princeton Packet. Now, there are a number of Board members whose term of office is starting anew, that is, they've been reappointed. And I know I have the oath of office signed by Andrea and Xenon, yep?
Yes. It's not the speakers in the room. Can you hear any of them?
No.
Yeah, I'll try this. Now, virtually all the members, is this better? Can people hear better?
No change.
No, no change?
I think the room speakers are not... My mic's not...
Is that any better now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. Rather than going through everything I said, I'm just going to continue. Most of the Board members have been, obviously, these are all prior members of the Board, have had new appointments, and they had to take an oath of office. Andrea has filled out the form, so has Xenon. I think everybody else, what I'm going to ask you to do, I'm going to swear you in tonight, and that would be Julie, Wanda, Jeffrey. Oh, okay, Wanda's turned hers in. So it'd be Julie, Xenon, not Xenon, Jeffrey, Alvin, and that's it then. Julie, Tim, Jeffrey, and Alvin. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the oath of office, and then if you so swear at the end. It would be if you could each, if you could each raise your right hand, and I'll read it, and then I'll ask you to confirm that you're so swearing. "I solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that it will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I defer the solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of Class 4 member," and that would be except for Alvin, that would be, oh, I guess Alvin's a Class 4 member too, sorry. Of the Plannin', oh, Julie, Julie would be Class 2, "of the planning board according to the best of my abilities, so help me God." Do you so swear?
So swear.
I do so swear.
I do so swear.
Affirm.
Okay, and then if you could hand your...
I do affirm.
Great, then when you have a chance, if you could hand in your forms to Kerry or to the Clerk's office. Kerry, could you please take the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Groen?
Here.
Mr. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Groen?
Here.
Quinn?
Here.
Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Texardini?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
No.
Here, we have a form.
Okay. The first order of business will be the nominations for Chair and Vice Chair, and I ask whether the nominating committee has to report.
Yes, this is Julie Capizoli, I'm Chair of the Nominating Committee, and this committee this year included Louise Wilson, Wanda Gunning, myself, and Jeffrey Oakman, who replaced Greg. The committee met using email from December 13th to December 21st, 2019, Jeffrey was traveling. The slate decided upon was Wanda Gunning as Chair and Louise Wilson as Vice Chair. Both Ms. Gunning and Ms. Wilson had these positions in 2019 and graciously agreed to continue.
Do I hear a motion nominating Wanda and Louise for the positions identified?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
No, there aren't.
Okay. Then we have a motion in a second, and Kerry, if you could please call a roll.
Mr. Capizoli?
Yes.
Groen?
Yes.
McGowan?
Yes.
Groen?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Texardini?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Let me begin by picking up on the announcements which are on the agenda for tonight. Louise, did you want to say something?
Just wanted to report quickly. Some folks might recall that last fall, the Environmental Commission forwarded to the Master Plan Committee a draft, green building and sustainability element of the master plan, and the Master Plan Committee met about it and some other issues last fall, and we've been working on it over the holidays, making good progress, I think. I just sent out another revised draft today, and I expect it will be coming to the planning board with a recommendation in the not-too-distant future. I just wanted to report on that.
Thank you. Anyone else have any announcements? All right. In the mailing for tonight, you should have received a number of forms for appointments and a couple of resolutions, so let me just move on to that. The first, let's see, the first resolution is the appointment of the Planning Board Attorney, which is Miller Porter and Mueller. Are there any questions about that? Would someone like to move that? So moved. Is there a second?
Julie Capizoli, second.
There are no further questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. The next one is the appointment of Special Counsel. Jerry Mueller says there's a mistake in the appointment of the Special Counsel, there's some carryovers from the previous year's resolution, so... So, if you could carry this.
No, we could, we could just adopt the resolution with the following change in the third whereas clause, Ms. Casey should be Ms. Koemer.
Yeah.
I have it.
Right.
Oh, I see.
Okay. So, this is the appointment of Heather Koemer as the special, the current Attorney for, and Special Counsel. Does someone want to move this?
I will move it as amended.
Second.
I move it as amended.
As amended, thank you. Was there a second?
Yeah, Tim.
Tim, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, and that will be changed. The next one is the appointment of the Planning Board Secretary, this is no surprise, Eileen Cutroneo. Is there any questions or anything? Would someone like to move this one?
I move to approve, Julie Capizoli.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Yeah, we had two resolutions, the first one...
Madam Chair, some members of the audience are having difficulty hearing you. I know that that mic is about as close as it can be.
Without swallowing it, right? Okay, so this is a resolution for special meetings, and are there any questions about this? You all got copies of it. Would someone like to move this one?
I'll move it.
Okay, seconds?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And the last one is for the fixed charges for meeting notices. So, any questions about that?
Julie Capizoli moved to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and that takes care of the resolutions and the appointments. Let's move on to minutes. You have four sets of minutes. Any questions about the minutes of March 16th, 2016? I've had a couple of questions about this. This was a closed session in regard to litigation, that's why these are so long in coming. Anybody questions, emendations? Does someone want to move those?
Julie Capizoli moved to approve.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded the executive session of March 16th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I have to abstain.
I have to abstain as well.
I'm sorry?
I have to abstain.
Okay.
I wasn't part of the board. I wasn't here.
Very few people were here. What happens is that we simply take the names off of people who were not present at the meeting or on the board, so it will be a very small number of people who approved this. Let's move on to the regular meeting of January 17th, 2019. Any additions, corrections, anyone?
I'll move them.
Okay, is there a second? Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. The minutes of March 21st, 2019, any additions, corrections, anyone?
Do you have those?
Someone like to move those?
I'll move them.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And the last set was a regular meeting of May 16th, 2019. Any additions, corrections, emendations, anybody? Someone like to move that?
Julie Capizoli moved to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. All right. And that brings us to this evening's hearing. I am going to recuse myself at this point, my husband is a university employee, and turn the meeting over to Ms. Wilson, who will do this. This is the concept plan, trustees of Princeton University.
I'm scrambling for my, for my agenda. So this is a hearing, the trustees of Princeton University, the concept plan for the Washington Road, Faculty Road, Ivy Lane, Project East Campus, I think it's known as. Mr. La Place, do you want to start us off?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Happy New Year, everyone, good evening. What we have before us this evening, oh, Jerry, do I need to be sworn in?
No.
Okay.
Just the concept plan.
Shouldn't have said anything. All right, what we have before us this evening is a concept review for an area of the campus, of the Princeton campus, Princeton University campus in Princeton, which is covered in the 2026 Campus Plan for the university. As you know, the university is moving forward with many projects, both on the Princeton and West Windsor sides of Lake Carnegie, and what we have before us this evening is more or less a bundled presentation of several elements of new development that are happening in what's called the East Campus. In the master plan presentation, the campus plan presentation, it was known as the East Campus Entry, I believe it was called. The site that we're going to hear about this evening is about 140 acres, of which actual improvements are about 33 acres, according to the materials we reviewed. Just so you can get your bearings, the area is on the eastern end of the university's Princeton campus. It's bordered on the north by Western Way. To the west is the stadium, Princeton Stadium, and Jadwin Gym. To the south is Faculty Road and the lake beyond, and then the easterly border of the project site is Broadmead. Fitz Randolph Road goes through the site, as do other university streets and passageways. Right now, currently, the location has athletic fields and surface parking lots, that's also the location of the Fitz Randolph Observatory, and some academic support buildings that you'll hear about as well. And the idea is to develop other athletic facilities, a structured parking garage, a reorganization of parking, of the parking system in a concentrated facility that you'll hear about when the garage is discussed by the applicant. And so that's a major component of what's going to happen on the East Campus. What happens here is that some of these existing athletic facilities are going to be moved to West Windsor, what's being called the Lake Campus in West Windsor Township, and that frees up space here then for facilities to be built that are being relocated from other parts of the university's campus in Princeton. As you know, recently, we approved the site plan for the two new residential colleges. So, everything sort of affects everything else in the overall campus plan. This is freeing up locations for uses that were where the new residential college is going to be built to move over here, but you'll hear that in more detail from the applicant. The, it's a permitted, all the uses are permitted in the E1 education zone, which is where this project site is located. And other than that, some of the issues that I raised in my memo were the proposal, and even the master plan, doesn't really talk about the Fitz Randolph Observatory, so we would like to hear a little bit more about whether any consideration was given to preserving that structure, looking, if not in its current use, adaptive reuse of the building, or possibly relocating it, it has an interesting history. And then also, there's indicated on the, on the site, on the proposed concept plan, our oil tanks, we'd like to hear a little bit about that, we didn't have any information about these tanks. So there's some issues that we raised. One of the biggest concerns staff has and wants to hear about is with the development of this parking garage and the concentration of a large parking capacity at this southeastern end of the campus, in close proximity of Faculty Road and also Harson Street, how will circulation work? How is that going to impact this end of the campus and this section of Princeton? So those are some of the issues that we raised, staff raised, in reviewing the concept plan. There's a lot of parts to it, this East Campus entry area is going to be a very interesting and busy part of the future university campus. It's also going to be connected by the proposed flyover pedestrian bridge that will link Princeton with the West Windsor campus, the new Lake Campus. That's supposed to land basically in the corner of this project site near the Denunzio Pool, just east of Jadwin Gym, so we probably want to hear how all that works in terms of comprehensive circulation, how the pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular access to the evolving East Campus, how that all is going to function. So those are some of our thoughts for this concept review.
Mr. West, Mr. Bridgers, do you have anything to add?
The, no, just to clarify, the tanks are, they're not oil tanks, they're actually storage for the...
For the refinery.
For the geothermal.
That was going to be my first line.
But the one concern would, and I think, as Michael said, is the size and location of those tanks, I think they should talk about that a little bit more. My understanding is they are very tall tanks, and they're, the proximity to faculty, so I think that's just one thing the applicant should address.
Do I now ask Mr. Dugresia if he will get us started, or is there some step in between?
Well, you could either ask the Board if they have any questions of any of our consultants, or you could defer that, either way.
That's a good first step. Do any members of the Board have any questions for Mr. La Place or the other professionals?
I just wanted to confirm my understanding that the green outlined area is the 33 acres, though 140 acres was that larger, the entire block, which was shown on the front page of the packet, right?
Thank you, Councilman, that's correct, I didn't make that clear.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Dugresia.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. For the record, my name is Christopher Dugresia from the law firm of Drinker, Biddle, and Wreath, here on behalf of Princeton... I'm sorry? Hello? How's that? Oh, man, it's got to be real close, like karaoke. I was saying I'm from Drinker, Biddle, and Wreath, here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. We are here tonight to share with the planning board and the community the development plan for an area that we call East Campus. And as Michael pointed out, it is bordered on the bottom or the south by Faculty Road, it's located east of the stadium, on the northern part is Western Way, so it's south of Western Way, and Broadmead is the other boundary. So we're going to be focusing on this East Campus. We have a presentation for you this evening that will go through some of the components that Michael referred to, such as the garage, such as the new soccer stadium. Each one of those components will be organized into a separate site plan application, where we'll be coming before the planning board and presenting a site plan, and at that point we'll have everything fully designed. We're not at that point yet, we're a few steps back, we're at a concept plan, and we thought it would be really beneficial, rather than focus on one project at a time, to show the planning board the entire vision for the development. So you'll get to see all of the different components that are planned within this East Campus area, and not only that, but you'll see how they're integrated together, how they function, and, you know, how they create opportunities for better connections. One of the other themes that you'll see as we go through the presentation, is that better? Is the, is the focus on sustainability, and we've been here on a number of applications. I know everybody is aware of the very aggressive goal that Princeton University has in terms of becoming carbon neutral campus-wide by the year 2046. The redevelopment of this East Campus allows the university to take a huge step forward to meet that goal. So when we talk about the projects, for example, the parking garage, you'll see that there's thermo, geothermal wells underneath, it's going to be built so it'll support solar panels on top. So that's the kind of thing that you'll see. We're very excited to be here tonight to share with you this vision, and we look forward to your feedback. And with that, I'd like to introduce Princeton University's architect, Ronald McCoy.
Good evening. Well, as Chris said, that's a good introduction, let me then just begin and give everybody a better orientation to the, to the plan. Just to reinforce a couple things that Christopher said, we consider this a master planning effort, so that we can integrate all of the different projects into a cohesive campus planning strategy. This is a piece of the campus that has emerged over time, probably in a way that's functional, but not really a sort of part of a campus making. And so, we've been working primarily, we've got a number of consultants on the, on the campus planning effort here, led by Skidmore Owens and Merrill out of New York City, James Corner Field Operations is the landscape architect, and we have architects for each of the, what we call the vertical projects, soccer is also a vertical project, a very flat vertical project. So, we're going to, as Christopher said, we're going to introduce those projects here tonight, and we've already had an open house with the community last Friday and Saturday night, had a chance to get a lot of very helpful and useful input at that session, and I'm sure we can continue to learn more tonight from the, from the community and also from the planning board. Well, let me just orient you using this, actually, this is a good, a good way of orienting everybody. Stadium is a very easy way to orient ourselves, the football stadium here, Jadwin Gym, Faculty Road is sort of immersed in the trees here on the southern side of the site, Fitz Randolph, as was said earlier, goes through the edge of the site, but there are some facilities to the east of that, and Broadmead is here. This Lot 21, which is currently a parking lot for 720 cars, a surface parking lot, is one of the major sites of transformation, and we'll show more of that in a minute. I'm going to talk a little bit about the 2026 Campus Plan, the Sustainability Action Plan, which came out of the campus plan, and then was augmented by the, by the Action Plan, and then we'll show some of the site plans and renderings for the individual projects that have, that are underway. And then to talk about some of the sort of connective or integrated design elements that are holding the campus together from a planning strategy point of view. The 2026 Campus Plan, which we've had a chance to talk about as it was underway here a few times, and then we've, we've used it to introduce the residential college project that came before the planning board last year. I want to reiterate some of the guiding principles, which are here on the left that you can see, and particularly focus on probably number four, which is one of our principles was to create a climate that encourages thoughtful and creative approaches to sustainability. So, this project, as an implementation project for the, for the geo-exchange, heating and cooling of the campus, is a, as Christopher said, a primary step forward to becoming carbon neutral by 2046. A couple other things that are important to notice, or to note, are that when we produced the campus plan, we've always said it's a, a planning framework, it's not, should not be seen as a master plan, that it did not predict that this will go exactly here, but it was really to test capacity and to give ourselves a flexible framework for implementing projects. So anyone who's looked closely at the plan will notice that when we laid out the plan, we had a different location for the, what we call the Tiger Facility, I'll talk about that in a minute, and also a different strategy for, for parking. To the, to the point that was made earlier about the Fitz Randolph Observatory, it was always indicated as an area of development, this, this sort of cloud that we put over some of these sites, in the legend for the campus plan said that that would be a part of the campus that would be redeveloped over, over 30 years, and so it was anticipated at that time that this would be a site of transformation. Now, whether or not, so the flexibility of the plan says that we had thought about this in the long term, as we've now come into the more active campus planning strategy, we've realized that we need that site sooner rather than later. The Sustainability Action Plan, which as I said grew out of the campus plan as well, has identified a number of action areas that are, that have translated into goals for the 2046 horizon of the plan. The first one here, reducing the greenhouse gas emissions to zero by 2046, as has been said, is fundamentally dependent upon our strategy to use geo-exchange, heating and cooling for the entire campus. So, we will, over time, be converting both the existing campus and the future campus to the geo-exchange system. You see here a lot of other issues that I want to point out, just a couple of them, particularly the high-performance stormwater management, we all know that stormwater management is a critical issue in New Jersey and in Princeton, and we will be using this site to implement some stormwater management strategies that will take care of the local condition of the site, but will be also sized to handle... to handle future development on this part of the campus. So it's a kind of looking ahead, so that we can anticipate some of those stormwater management requirements and accommodate them on this site. The, you've heard that a major part of the project is to create additional parking spaces on the campus and to consolidate parking, really. We are, Kim Jackson is here tonight, the manager of our Transportation and Parking Services Division, and she has implemented over the last few years a very aggressive transportation demand management program, which is significantly impacting the number of single occupancy vehicles which are coming to campus, reducing those numbers. But in spite of those numbers, the campus does, the university does continue to grow. And so there is a need to accommodate some growth in the amount of cars that we accommodate on campus. One of our aspirations for the project, when we launched it, was to anticipate future paradigm shifts in parking strategies, so that hopefully we were at the end of the generation where we had to continue to build parking solutions. We're not quite there yet. We stated it as carefully as we could, but we realize that we still need to build one more parking garage before that paradigm shift really begins to show a kind of decline in the number of people who could drive to campus. And there are also aspirations for reducing waste, purchasing, expanding sustainable purchasing, and developing each individual project in sustainable ways. So those are just some of the goals from the Action Plan. I'm gonna move on to some of the site planning plans and renderings here to give you a better sense of the project. This is a site plan. So we've looked at an aerial view. We've seen the plan on the board over here. So this is, again, just an orientation. I don't think I need to go through it, but you've got the stadium here, the existing observatory here, and the large parking structure here. It's worth pointing out that a lot of existing athletics will remain on this side of the campus. So Jadwan Gym, Caldwell Fieldhouse, and Denunzio Pool will remain. We have a temporary softball facility that we have built here, if you've noticed it. And the Campus Plan calls for softball to be relocated to the Lake Campus, so that will be part of the Lake Campus Plan. The Finney Campbell Fields, which are used broadly by varsity athletics, but primarily by football, will remain on the site. Baseball remains on the site and is also, in the Campus Plan, anticipated to move to the Lake Campus. This then is the Campus Plan for the East Campus Entrance. That shows the sort of modifications to the campus planning strategy. I'm gonna walk through it a little bit in terms of the sort of types of facilities. So if you look at athletics, as I mentioned, Finney Campbell Field remains, but we will relocate the soccer game field, which is currently on the west side of campus. And we're using that site for the construction of the two new residential colleges. So we had to find a new home for the soccer stadium. We will retain the soccer practice field that's currently being used on the west side of Washington Road. And we'll use it for campus recreation and some varsity activities. But we really needed to co-locate the practice field for varsity soccer next to the soccer stadium. So as the soccer stadium moved to this site, so did the soccer practice field. You'll see probably one of the most noticeable transformations is the removal of the surface parking lot, which was for 720 cars, and the creation of a five-level parking structure, which is located here. That will accommodate all of the cars that are existing on that lot. It will also accommodate 499 cars that are in parking lots on Ivy Lane and Western Way, plus 47 cars that are parked at the Ferris Thompson Apartments. The, in terms of sustainability, much of what we're doing is invisible, and that is the GeoExchange wells, which will go, be located underneath the soccer stadium and underneath the parking garage. So those will be serving the very first generation of GeoExchange wells that we need. And they will provide the energy sources for the entire East Campus development. As you know, that we will be coming back to you in the next year to talk about the new neighborhood development for Environmental Studies and the School of Engineering. The East Campus energy system will be tied to the West Campus system, so that they'll be able to feed off of each other. The facility here is the, basically houses the heat pumps that are part of the system for the GeoExchange well system. It also accommodates a facility for operations for athletics. We call this Athletics Ops Building. Athletics has slightly less than a dozen employees that serve the maintenance and care of the athletic fields on this side of the campus. So this would be a staff home for those individuals, as well as a place for their maintenance vehicles on this side of Fitz Randolph. And then at the southern end of the site are the thermal energy storage tanks. These are the tanks that are serving to store the hot and chilled water that are used in the heat pump system to provide the energy sources for the campus. So that's an overview of the facilities. And then, as I mentioned, we are working with James Corner Field Operations as our landscape architect. And they are using landscape architecture, as we do throughout the campus, to knit together the various components of the site. We're able to take advantage of the existing trees that Beatrix Farron planted in 1933 on this part of the campus. We are able to take advantage of the screening capacity of the existing woodlands around the tanks and around the garage. And additionally, we're setting back the garage from Fitz Randolph and from Faculty to supplement those existing trees, to further screen these kinds of facilities. And I'll show that when we get to the rendering. On this part of the landscape plan, this shows the potential flyover, which is noted in the Campus Plan. And we've always said that we're designing Lake Campus to be successful with or without this flyover. This is a very complicated project, and it's not assured that we'll go forward with it. And that will be the, but that's the planned location for the flyover. There is a new, or I'd say an enhanced, or actually really a new roadway that connects east-west across the site. It arrives at an expanded drop-off at Denunzio Pool. There's a lot of community use at that drop-off, and we've expanded the size of that so that buses and cars can navigate that together. And then we have a north-south connector, North-South Drive, that brings traffic up to Ivy Lane and Western Way, provides access to the west over to Washington Road, and serves as another, all of this network serves as another way in and out of the parking structure. The parking structure has two main points of entrance and egress. One is at this northeast corner of the garage, and another one is at the southwest corner of the garage. In addition, we have an exit-only located at the southeast corner of the garage. We know that there'll be a lot of questions and conversation about the traffic impacts of this. And we really want to be able to answer those kinds of questions until we complete a traffic impact assessment of the parking structure. But its location at the southern part of the site really will drive a lot of the access to it from Faculty Road, from Washington and Harrison, and from Route 1. It's also important to say that in eliminating the 500-plus cars from Ivy Lane and Western Way, that traffic is expected to go down on that street and in this part of the campus. So this is an aerial view, which shows all of those different facilities. We've, one of the things that we learned when we had our discussions with the community last weekend was that these look like we're making white buildings. That's our mistake. We showed them in white to denote that they're not designed yet. We could have shown them in black, but that would have looked like we're trying to hide them. So we're honestly showing them as buildings that are under design. We haven't, we're still in the schematic design process for those facilities, and they're still being developed. But you can see here then, the pump station for the Tiger Facility, the storage tanks, the garage, and this garage is designed to be solar-ready. We implement our solar panel strategy with power purchase agreements through third parties. And we anticipate that this will become part of that agreement for third-party power purchase agreement that would provide photovoltaic panels on the roof of the parking structure. This is the soccer stadium here on the northern side of the site, and the soccer practice field on the southern part of the site. These fields will be illuminated. There will be sports lighting for these fields. But we look forward, when we submit the site plan applications, to show how the technology for lighting has evolved over time. So we're able now to use highly efficient LED lighting that are low glare, significantly better than existing sports lighting. So that'll be the lighting that we'll be implementing on those fields. So then to just look at some of the early renderings of the projects, this is the parking garage, which is five levels of parking. The top deck is 48 feet above the grade at this level. And this is, this corner here houses the elevators and the primary stair tower. So this is, we're looking here at the northwest corner of the parking structure. This is the one that is closest to the pathways that will provide access to the campus, and the one that we think that really most of the people will come in and out of. At its base, it will have an enclosed heated and cooled waiting area and covered biking here, covered bike parking for both the Zagster program and for commuters who are coming back and forth to the garage. You'll see a little bit here of one of the Tiger Transit buses. There'll be a bus drop-off on the west side of that facility, so that when people are in the waiting room, they can see the bus arrive. And there'll also be bus drop-off on the north side of that facility. This view is taken from the southwest corner of the soccer stadium, so people who are arriving for sporting events would simply cross the street and access soccer, or the football stadium, or Jadwan Gym very conveniently. And you can see here a kind of idea of the, of new landscape planting and trees that we would plant to screen the garage. And then you'll also see the solar array that would be located on the top of the garage. The garage itself is envisioned to be a sort of enhanced precast concrete, so to sort of lighten the look of it and to make it a little bit more architectural. But really, the landscape will provide most of the screening of the garage, as you can see here, from the southeast corner of the garage, where Faculty Road is in the foreground here, going east and west. Fitz Randolph here, going north and south. So we're looking at that southeast corner. And there's a mixture of existing trees in this area supplemented with the new trees that would screen the garage. And on the, just on the corner here is a view of some of the existing trees in that woodland area. This is a view looking from the east. So if you were probably venturing off of Broadmead, adjacent to the retention basin, which will be retained in this area of the campus, this would be the view that you would have. And that would be further screened. These are where the heat pumps are located, screened with trees. The Athletic Operations Facility is down at this end, also screened by the trees. And the thermal energy storage tanks are at this end of the site. But as I mentioned, these would not be white buildings. We want to make them a dark recessive color, so that they blend into the landscape rather than stand out from the landscape. We're simply showing them here this way, so that you can, so that we're evident what we're planning to do. In the background, again, you can see the parking structure and the solar panels on top of the parking structure. The soccer stadium is a very modest facility, but very elegant, just like the existing soccer stadium, if you've had a chance to visit that. It's slightly bermed up. This is the street that brings you into the campus from Fitz Randolph. In the foreground here is the grove of heritage trees that Beatrix Farron planted, as I mentioned, in 1933. And so the ground's gently slopes up to the stadium. And then the stadium is sunken down from that. It's about, from the entrance concourse down to the stadium is about 10 feet. On the west side of the stadium, there's a lower level that has the locker rooms for the teams and the team benches. At the concourse level would be entrance, restrooms, and concessions, and ticketing. And one level up from that would be the broadcast and sort of camera positions above the concourse level. This is shown as a U-shaped configuration, which is slightly different than what we have now. On the northern side, we anticipate to have a bermed landscape, sort of like a spring training baseball game that people could sit on the lawn and watch the game. And then also, on the east side of the stadium, additional concessions and restrooms. So this is the site where the existing Fitz Randolph Observatory is. And I know that was something that we wanted to talk about here tonight. The, this is the third observatory that the university has had. There was, it was built out of the, using the stone from the Halsted Observatory that was on Prospect Avenue, that was torn down to create the Fitz Randolph Observatory. We don't have the exact date when the observatory went out of use, but sometime after Peyton Hall was built, which is the home of astrophysics, the observ, there was a telescope that remained in this observatory, but we think, we're still doing the research on that. It's been hard to find the exact date that it was not used, but somewhere around 1990 to 1995, the observatory stopped being used. It has been used for basically storage since then. We are exploring the opportunity to reuse some of the stonework from that building. We have to test it to make sure that it doesn't have any hazardous materials in the mortar or other pieces of it that make it difficult to use. And you'll see here, over on the right-hand corner, just a kind of, I'd say it's a twinkle in the eye of our landscape architect, to say, could we, could we take some of that stone and reuse it as a sort of seating area that's in the public realm on the east side of the campus? So if you were taking a walk down Fitz Randolph, there'd be a kind of memory of the observatory and the stones that could be seating areas there, which would also be used for events, soccer games, or for reunions, or things like that. So we're very attentive to the history of that facility, and we'd like to find a way to sort of recognize its history. The third observatory is, was on campus where Jolene Hall is right now. So if you look at an aerial photo of the campus before World War II, you'll see another observatory on that part of the campus. So we have a history of observatories, coming and going. This is the north-south walkway that I referred to. It's a little bit hard to orient yourself here, but the Weaver Track Stadium is on the right here. And we're looking to the south toward Jadwan Gym, the Fitz Randolph, I mean, the Finney Campbell Football Practice Fields are here on the left. But this is the roadway that we would enhance. We actually call it Stadium Drive here. And we would use Stadium Drive as access to the parking structure, as I said, between Ivy Lane, Western Way and the parking structure. And we would create this as a complete street, something that allows all modes of traffic and transportation, our Tiger Transit System being outpaced here by a fancy car. And then pedestrians and bicycles that could, would be using that to get over to the rest of the campus, particularly to the north and to the west. So some of the just integrated design elements that I just wanted to highlight, various sort of pieces of the overall site plan. These are the parking lots that will be basically lost as we construct and design the new Neighborhood for Environmental Studies and the School of Engineering. As I said, 499 spaces in the assigned lots, and then 47 spaces for the residents of Ferris Thompson Apartments. Parking lot Lot 21 that I've mentioned, some athletic parking here. And Fitz Randolph Field, but also the parking, there's overflow parking there if you ever see an event for reunions, or football, or baseball, or basketball. That's the event parking. So all that would go away and be replaced by the parking structure that we've talked about. The, this is really showing, in black, the existing roadway network, and in this sort of purple color, the new roadway network. So these are, there'd be a new connection to Faculty Road and connecting to Stadium Drive that comes up to Ivy Lane and Western Way. And then the existing entrance into the campus from Fitz Randolph would basically be retained. The vehicular roadways and the pedestrian bicycle pathways are indicated here. That Stadium Drive becomes a primary north-south connector, as I've talked about. And we really want to enhance the pedestrian and bicycle experience on the east-west passage. passageway through campus, as well as the north-south passageway through campus. We will be proposing improvements to Fitz Randolph to make that a more complete-street-friendly environment, completing sidewalk networks and treating that as a part of the campus fabric. This just further illustrates how that east-west pathway fits into the patterns of east-west pathways that are characteristic of the campus. These are the pathways that follow along the contours and are very easy to navigate for pedestrians and cyclists. So this would sort of strengthen an east-west pathway into a kind of pedestrian and bicycle-friendly pathway. And then you'll see here the access to that network system from the neighborhood. The garage access, I've already talked about this a couple times, that it really is at this northeast corner, southwest corner, in and out at both of those locations, and then another exit here. So we expect most of the traffic to be exiting on the Faculty Road, but obviously there will be other parts of the fabric, of the traffic that will go northward. And that's the reason for this new Stadium Drive, to make that an easy exit to find Washington Road and northbound traffic. I think people have noticed that in the campus plan, we said that Roper Lane would be closed, that we would continue with another north-south sort of leg or segment of that that would allow traffic to get up to Prospect Avenue. That will be designed and presented as part of the project that we come forward with for Environmental Studies and for the School of Engineering and Applied Science. Landscape, as I said, is both existing in some really beautiful trees and would be supplemented with the work of James Carter Field Ops. This is the gathering place that I mentioned around the grove of trees by Beatrix Farron. This place, this pathway between the soccer stadium and Finney Campbell will become an important campus walkway. In the campus plan, we identify this neighborhood as future development. And so we expect this walkway to be part of a campus network that connects up to the north here. I've talked about the arrival place for the flyover here and the existing woodland buffers, which are primarily at the southern boundary of the site and wrap around here on Broadmead up near the retention basin, the East Basin site. And then we would plant additional buffers along the athletic ops and Tiger Facility, along the parking garage, both faces, and at this sort of arrival place for the flyover. We have, as I mentioned, stormwater management is another high priority. We will have underneath the soccer field a regional stormwater retention basin system, a regional stormwater system. So there'll be below-ground underfield storage, which is indicated here. We already do this on Finney Campbell, so we would do that under the soccer stadium to capture both, as I said, stormwater on the site as well as provide additional capacity for future development projects. Some of these photographs just show the range of tools that we intend to use for stormwater management. This one on the lower left is our project on the Princeton campus. This is the Lakeside Graduate Housing Project that uses rain gardens and bio-retention. We also have rain gardens adjacent to the chemistry facility. We have porous pavement on other parts of the campus. They just don't look as pretty as this. So we took this photograph to indicate that. But we'll look at the full array of strategies to manage stormwater on this site. So really, this is a site that, when you look at it, will not look as if it's so high-performance, but the site will really hold, it's a kind of vertical stacking of geo-exchange wells, of stormwater management, and of the facilities such as the soccer practice and the parking structure. So that, I think, is where we want to leave it. We'll leave it with this plan so we can have comments and questions. And we're happy to, you know, listen and to take questions from the board and from the community, because, as I said, we're still early in the design of these projects. And the feedback was very helpful last weekend. Well, we expect to continue to get helpful feedback here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Yes. Can you use your mic?
Okay, so the landscape slide and then the slide right before that showed the egress out of the garage.
Yes.
It looked to me like the egress points out of the garage would go over what on the landscape slide is supposed to be greenery.
So the, well, this is a diagram, so excuse us for that. We're simply saying that on this eastern side of the garage would be a landscape buffer. Obviously, there would be a driveway that cuts through that landscape buffer. There's a driveway that would cross that one, and there's a driveway that would cross that landscape buffer.
Okay.
And to faculty, yeah.
Zenon?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the geothermal exchange wells, like, and how the system will work? Where is it going to be in the actual site? You know, it will go down, will it go horizontally? How deep will it go? Those kind of things. And then I guess another question about the fields, the baseball fields and softball fields, like, what your plans are, but I guess, yeah.
So I've been living in fear of that question, because I'm an architect and not an engineer. But geo-exchange basically uses the constant heat of the earth, which is heated by the sun, to provide a more efficient transfer of energy. So instead of having, basically, it's used to, we use it in the summer cooling months to take energy out of the spaces into the, and use the earth as a heat sink. And then in the heating months, we can extract heat out of the earth, and there's less of a delta between that and the air temperatures that we need to deliver in our facility. So, for example, the EPA has said that, and not just the EPA, but this is actually the most energy-efficient heating and cooling system for spaces that exists. Now, it depends on the geo-exchange wells that tap into the earth and use it as the heat sink for the system to work. Those wells, we're exploring the depth, the kind of optimum depth of those wells, but we're somewhere in the 600 to 800-foot depth is what we think that they will be. We're also exploring the number of wells. The deeper the depth of the wells, the fewer wells you need. But we anticipate that we'll need the full footprint of the soccer stadium and the full print of, the full footprint of the garage in the initial phase. We have, there are other opportunities and sites on the east campus and on the west campus that will accommodate future phases. The spacing between the wells are about, I think, 20 to 25 feet. And then the heat pumps, which then distribute that and circulate that water to the heat exchangers in the individual buildings, is located here. So there's a network of infrastructure throughout the existing campus and the new campus that distributes that hot water at about 130 degrees and chilled water to all the facilities. So they use them on-site. So we will be abandoning all of our steam that we use, we use steam heating right now and chilled water. We can reuse the chilled water networks that we have, and we have to augment those for the new system here. But this is a much more energy-efficient chilled water system. The steam system, we cannot reuse, so we'll be abandoning or removing that steam system and converting the entire campus to this technology.
That sounds fantastic. I was just wondering, so is the whole entire campus going to be heated and cooled by this system, or is it just going to be a portion?
The entire campus by, I think our goal is 2036, to have the entire campus transformed to this new system. So the new facilities that will be coming forward to the planning board, even the residential college that we've already come forward with, are all being designed to be converted or to be online with this new system. And so that'll, all of our buildings will be either newly designed for this system or we will retrofit all of our existing buildings for this system.
Great.
And everything will be served by this system we're talking about, or you'll duplicate geothermal?
We will duplicate, we'll have another geo-exchange system on the west side of the campus. It'll be a renovation of our existing western central energy plant. And we will have additional geo-exchange wells on the western side of the campus. The two systems will be interconnected for backup and for redundancy. But we'll have two systems here. And then on the lake campus, we will have another system, another heat pump system and another area of geo-exchange wells for the lake campus.
One more question about this system, which is the storage tanks. Is there a reason why they have to be completely above-grade, or could some of the storage capacity be sunk into the ground so that these buildings wouldn't have to be so tall?
I think the primary reason is that we're above rock, and it'd be exorbitantly prohibitively expensive to excavate that amount of rock. We will, if, we're still getting the geotech reports. If the soils are favorable, we'll look at, to take advantage of those favorable soils to see if we can sink them as much as possible. But the rock is, we know rock is everywhere, and it's prohibitively expensive to try to excavate these. You do see some around the country. We saw, we saw one at University of Riverside in California that was on a kind of hill and was able to, you know, be suppressed. But it is the nature of the beast.
Okay. One other question, if I could, relating to the parking. It sounded like the description of the capacity of the garage, you just mentioned the various areas of parking that are going to be accommodated into it. But I thought early on, I also heard you say something about some added capacity.
Yeah.
Can you tell how many additional?
It's, when you take in, you do all the math, it's less than 200, I think it's 171, 79, 179 net new cars of capacity in this area.
So sorry, that, just to clarify, that's all of the, that's the capacity of all of those places you showed in orange, and then there's an additional?
Yes, that's the net add. So you take away all those spaces, you add back the parking structure, and the net increase is the 179.
So what is that total number of spaces in the garage? Gotcha.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you. Could you, I'm sure you, I just didn't write this down, the height of the geothermal tanks?
They're shown at 80 feet now, and that's the pure height that they need. That's their size to handle the load of the sort of early morning system, you know, you need, as the campus sort of comes online in the morning, it needs that volume of water to service the buildings. So it's a volume of water that they're sized around. And then the, that volume of water for principles of stratification, which use that water optimally, it's a sort of one-to-one relationship between the height and the diameter. So they're 80 foot in diameter and 80 foot tall.
And the garage height, I?
48 feet to the top parking level from the north end. The site does slope down to the south, so it's taller at the southern end, not by a full floor, but by about three-quarters of a floor.
And my final question is, I think we're all eager for a future where there are fewer single occupancy vehicles in general, everywhere, not just in Princeton. And I'm just wondering if the garage is being designed so that it could be retrofitted for another use, say, housing or another academic use long after we're gone?
Great question. That's what I was referring to when I talked about anticipating the paradigm shift in parking and transportation. And we did a really, really thorough study of this structure at the beginning of the project to see if it was possible, feasible, to build a facility, a structure that could be converted to either office building or housing. And it turned out that all of the premiums involved in sort of anticipating that future transformation and the sort of selective demolition and retrofit of the facility ended up being more expensive than simply tearing down the garage and recycling the material and building a new structure. What we did do, though, however, is find a kind of sweet spot. We have, the ground, the first floor of the garage is a taller level. And so, for example, the western bay of the, well, the whole ground level is tall, but we could take a portion of the western side of that and use that for an occupied space. We could use that for a kind of office space or something else that might emerge. So we kind of struck a balance there. That higher bay also allows us to take vans and other vehicles so that, the kinds of things that can get caught underneath the low beams of a typical garage. So it's designed for some of that. And also, one of the other things that one has to anticipate in autonomous vehicles are places for people to pull up, get in and out of their vehicle while the vehicle goes and parks itself. So that higher ground level could be retrofitted to allow that kind of activity to happen, not so much for the height, but just for the kind of expanse of the area. So there's an arrival sequence that needs to be planned into these facilities to anticipate autonomous vehicles and self-parking.
Thank you.
Anybody over here? Anybody? I had a question about, just again, the traffic floor. I was looking at Michael's question number four. And as far as the maximum capacity for that garage, is it mostly during, like, sporting events or something? I mean, is that where you anticipate it being really full?
Well, we keep a surplus in our parking supply, and that surplus we use for, we know that we need, we need to keep a surplus for any kind of event. So during the day, in a typical academic day, there could be a conference somewhere or a speaker. And so we like to keep an additional 200 cars in this garage for that kind of capacity. We probably anticipate that over time, we will fill up the balance of that garage. And then sporting events are peak-load opportunities, obviously. And so for a sporting event, we imagine this and other parking spaces would be, you know, filled.
Okay, thank you.
Or if the Dalai Lama came back for a visit.
If we could revisit one of my earlier questions, which I guess got lost. It's not related to the site per se, but right above it with the softball field, temporary softball field and the baseball field. And I was just curious, I mean, it looks like the softball field is temporary based off of your statements and the wording there, but can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot. Softball field is temporary. We had to, again, vacate the existing softball field to, because the residential colleges are being built on that site. And the softball field, per the 2026 plan, will go to the lake campus. And we are building other facilities, other varsity athletic facilities on the lake campus, so there'll be some synergies there with locker rooms and training and strength training and things like that. So softball will, the field will be relocated to the lake campus. What happens to the future of this is, I think, to be determined, the temporary softball field. It could be used for club sports, it could be used for other varsity, it could actually be used for hammer throw. So, and the baseball will remain in this location until we determine, decide to redevelop this site. So that's why we're avoiding making long-term investments in this site just south of Ivy Lane and Western Way, because, again, in the campus plan, this was designated as an area of future development. And so that's, that will be for future generations to decide. But baseball, baseball has, in the master plan for the lake campus, there's a site designated for baseball to be co-located next to softball and next to the other varsity sports that will relocate to the lake campus.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you. By some historic accounts, narratives, and knowing that Mrs. Gunning is not on the dais to answer this question, some historians believe that tailgating was created in Princeton, was born in Princeton because traffic was so bad at the time. I'm not seeing any... I'm not seeing any area that will accommodate tailgating on this plan. Or, let me rephrase, can you show me where the sort of robust tailgates that we now see, especially for games against Yale and Penn, will, where that activity will take place?
So if tailgating was born in Princeton, tailgating will die in Princeton.
First or last?
It's our athletic director.
Some of your donors might, you might want to run that by some of your donors.
Here's, here's the plan. It turns out that tailgating has evolved into a concierge activity. And there are now, most of the activities happen in tents that are set up and rented and host different organizations, different alumni, things like that. The, I, I was on-site this year for homecoming game. And I'd say 90% of the participants in the tailgating activity are in organized events that are, that are provided on campus. And a very small percentage of them are in the parking lot. So, so still, we, we know that some of those people love to tailgate, who, who really love to pull into a parking lot and do that. There will be opportunities for that in the future if they're, if they're that committed to it, but they just won't be on this site. But what we do, what we are able to do is create, for example, these gathering places are larger and we can, we can handle far more tents for the organized type of tailgating activities that will, that will happen in these, in these locations. So it's true that that type of tailgating where you just do it out of the back of your car is not going to be accommodated here. But most of ours is of a different flavor.
Thank you.
I would just say, at the garages in the vicinity of Yankee Stadium, there's a good bit of tailgating that happens within the garage before and after.
Yeah, we've, we've talked to our garage consultant about that and it's illegal. So we're, so we're not going to, we're not going to do it.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. LePlace?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the subject of the observatory, the Fitz Randolph Observatory. Staff is interested in this building. It's a part of the university and the community's history. Having been built in 1933, I guess it was the same time that some of those trees were planted that you mentioned on the corner there. That's going to be part of the new gathering space, just east of the proposed soccer stadium. And you had a slide that showed possible reuse of the stone and some kind of sculptural element. We would like the university to consider maybe relocating the observatory to that corner instead of creating a new element with the stone. And perhaps thinking, if it's not going to be used as observatory anymore, because I guess it's not being used for that right now, perhaps it could have a new use, maybe associated with visitor information or recreational information or administrative support. We just, you know, if we're talking about a green plan and being sustainable, buildings should be recycled too. And especially if they have historical and architectural significance. It's a relatively small building, it wouldn't be difficult to relocate or reconstruct. We'd just like to have the university seriously consider that. The architect was an alumni of the university, Stephen Francis Bores, class of 1900. He also did the engineering quadrangle. So he has a, you know, he's an important part of the story here, both for the university and the community. So we'd like to, we'd like to have some serious consideration be done on, for the future of the observatory.
Yeah, we recognize that. We'll, we'll take that, we'll definitely give that some thought. We have commissioned Mills and Schnoring, local architects and historic preservations, to do, preservation firm, to do a sort of HABs level analysis of the building. So we've been able to uncover a lot of the history that you just talked about. So we'll, we'll look at that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It was brought to my attention also that it's considered by some to be the first modern building on the campus. That, you know, in terms of its streamlined details, lack of ornamentation, the corner windows, things like that. Which was interesting to me because when you see a building with fieldstone, you don't think of it as being modern or international style. But it might have been a transitional kind of design feature on the campus. So thank you for giving it consideration.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. LePlace. I think if there are no other questions from board members, I can open it up for questions from members of the public. Wanda usually uses this right now. Any members of the public that would like to speak, pose questions, welcome. Do we need names that don't we? Just state your name for the record.
Chairman, I'm William Wolfe. And I customarily attend as the chairman of SPRAB when applicants put it, come in for a concept review. And so that's my purpose tonight. And the first thing I want to say is that I am delighted that the university has come in for a concept review. Other institutions in the town have made use of this important device and it almost always helps the whole process. And in the past, the university hasn't always. I think, I'd, I'd like to make that a point, that I think this is a very good process. I think so far, the university has been extremely open with neighbors on this project. And it's all a good thing. Secondly, I'm basically here to praise everything about this, this project. I think I am delighted, I even, as an alumni, feel proud that the university is taking such a leadership role in addressing head-on and long-term one of the biggest, if the biggest problem facing humanity. So this really is a giant step for us all. And I have nothing but enthusiasm for that. And I, sure, I speak for, for SPRAB on that. We've spent a number of years trying to encourage applicants to look at solar and geothermal just for this reason. That it, as Ron was absolutely right, geothermal exchange is the most efficient, energy-efficient way of heating and cooling buildings. And the only thing I want to say on that is I want to encourage the university to look for more solar capacity. Because as somebody who's done this, I can, I can tell that the roof of the garage is, is not anywhere near enough solar capacity in itself for this facility. Now, we know the university has other large solar fields and it's all fungible. But I just, this is just a concept. As the concept develops, I'd encourage the university to look at other surfaces, such as the cladding material on the garage can be photovoltaic. Photovoltaics can be integrated with lots of surfaces. They don't have to be just separate panels on, on top. But, you know, that kind of development is, isn't really part of concept review. So I just basically want to say, I'm very, very pleased with this.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Brynildsen. I live at 62 Hartley Avenue.
Could you spell your name, please, sir?
I hope you can hear me. Stand up more? Yeah, well, I sounded pretty good myself. Okay, my name is Robert Brynildsen. I live at 62 Hartley Avenue. That's the park between Broadmead and South Harrison.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you, can you spell your name for the record, please? Thanks.
Okay. The, the garage is mentioned is, is 1,567 spaces. And the current Lot 21 is 702. But Lot 21, and I walk the area and bike the area, is very rarely full. And it's more in the order of about 500 spaces. Currently, the traffic has been estimated by the university at roughly around 300, peak hour, 300 cars, vehicle cars per hour in the evening lot. If you put a 13, almost 1,500-car garage in that area, you can expect to see almost 1,000 cars peak exiting that area in the evening. So first, I'm concerned with traffic. And I think the traffic modeling here has to be done. I think you can easily envision the fact that that road right now is the main connector. Faculty is between Alexander, Washington and Harrison. And you can see any night, I see the traffic. In fact, we have a lull in traffic right now. We're the only beneficiaries of cutting off the bridge at Alexander because there's now no cross-traffic. And so it's actually quite nice. Don't recommend it as a long-term plan, though. And the, the problem then is vehicle traffic. The other problem is the numbers. They, they come up and they add all the numbers up, add another 200, it's actually 366 because they've counted 140 spaces, which is the dirt field. And the dirt field is used maybe once a year, twice a year. So an honest estimate is it's 366 basis. And that includes the 499 up on the, which is almost always used as the desired parking up on Western Way. And about the 500 is probably used most days in Lot 21. So I think the university has to come forward with an honest realization. This is a substantial, very big increase in traffic that will go on Hartley. And what else can you do with Hartley? Faculty, I don't think you can propose increasing the size and it will only hold so much traffic. And that's really what it comes down to, it comes to traffic. If basically ride-sharing is a desired goal, then how come all the traffic, everything gets added together here and further concentrates and increases the total traffic area? So I would encourage the university to look at retaining some, either reducing the total traffic load, which I don't think they can do, or encourage some of the traffic parking to be up back on Western Way and not concentrate all the traffic in Lot, what will be the replacement for Lot 21. I think I, I wrote down a note, the university gave out a handout at the session on Friday and Saturday. And I wrote my notes. If you would like a copy, I'll comment on what the university has presented today. But fundamentally, my concern is traffic and the fact that we're increasing, particularly if I accept this view of, of ultimate goal of truly getting to 1,567 cars. You've effectively tripled the traffic load out of the garage area, a Lot 21 area, over what it currently is. And that would put the traffic load at over 1,000 car per hour. So that's a lot of cars. Any other, if you want this, I'll give you a copy. If not, okay, thank you.
Eric Greenfeld, 35 Markham Road, G-R-E-N-F-E-L-D-T.
Thank you.
Question, if we could go back to the two water towers. Could you repeat the dimensions of those? Were they as fat as they were high? Is that what I heard?
That's right, 80 feet in diameter and 80 feet tall.
Okay. Is there any reason why the catch basin behind this pump building could not be moved north? And the two towers made shorter and fatter and moved a little bit to the east and to the north?
I'm sorry, could you, what was, could you say that again? What was the idea?
The, it looks like there's a retention basin of some kind behind the pump station. Is there any reason why that could not be moved to the north? And then the water towers made fatter and shorter so that they would be perhaps behind that structure instead of sticking 80 feet up in the air?
Well, the...
You would still have the same water capacity, you just wouldn't have it up 80 feet from the ground.
The engineering requirements is really a one-to-one portion to get the stratification that makes the system work. So they, they really need to be at that optimum dimension. And the retention basin is a permitted basin. And it really, it's sized for the stormwater that it's handling. And we have the childcare facility to the north and so it really can't be relocated. Childcare facility is here. Well, we'll, we'll look at it. I don't, my sense is that it would be challenging, but we'll look at that.
Excuse me, I keep turning my mic on and off at the wrong time. Andrea has a process question for Jerry.
So with respect to the concerns raised about traffic, is at some point in this process, is there going to be a traffic study done either by staff or the applicant?
When you come in with actual applications, I plan up applications, they'll certainly have traffic studies done for that.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Turn it on.
Thank you. We've retained a traffic consultant who is in the process of doing a very detailed transportation improvement study. So we'll have all of the numbers and the figures and the analysis, very detailed report with our submission of the site plan application.
Thank you. We'll proceed with public comment. Yes, sir?
Good evening, my name is Martin Schneiderman. I live on Murray Place in Princeton, S-C-H-N-E-I-D-E-R-M-A-N. Murray Place is the extension of Fitz Randolph Road, the road that's in front of the Energy Building that's there. And the meeting we had on Friday and Saturday was very well-attended. The university hosted it. There were about four dozen people that came from the community, two hours each one of the meeting. And they posed lots and lots of questions. And the document that the gentleman talked about, I, we would be happy to make sure that you have copies of. The document we sent to the university many months ago, when we heard about the concept of what was going to be happening, and posed a lot of questions. As a result of the meeting on Friday and Saturday, there were even more questions that we posed to the university. This document includes 88 questions with detailed answers that the university provided, as best as they know that right now. We know that this is the preliminary, this is the beginning of a process. And the process has been moving along nicely right now. Just by way of a little bit of background, when the university did expansion of the engineering quadrangle a number of years ago, it was an area called the E3 Zone. The community expressed concerns about that. We worked collaboratively with the university and the municipality at the time. And the E3 Zone was rezoned in a way that worked for the university to accomplish what they needed and was also responsive to all of the key points the community had as well. And what we hope going forward is understanding the direction the university not just wants to go, but needs to go, to be current and to be responsive to students coming in the future. We want to make sure that's going to work well. The questions that you've posed this evening are very interesting ones for us to hear because they were very much the same questions that people were asking at the meeting on Friday and Saturday and are in this document that we have right here. And the gentleman that was talking about traffic flow, we know is of greatest importance to the neighbors. The university had plans of building a parking garage, I think it was 1,700 spaces or something like that in the middle of the field a number of years ago. And that was before the stock market plummeted and the university put all of that on hold. They tabled that and now it's come up once again. But quite right, the major concern the community has has to do with the flow of traffic. I'll make a couple of points if I may. Murray Place a number of years ago was concerned that the flow of traffic, the number of cars and the speed was too high. We requested at the time that speed humps be installed. And the university was not part of that, that was the municipality. The solution was to determine what the flow of traffic was, how many cars came, how many at what time of day, and so on and so forth. The conclusion was unanimous on the part of not only the people on the street, but the engineer that came back and said, you're absolutely right, the flow of traffic is much higher. We need to do something about it. And speed humps were put there. So we have numbers, so the traffic study group can go back and look at what that was as the starting place a number of years ago. What's happened with town over the years? But a concern to us is in particular the notion of these six parking lots that are on Western Way and Ivy Lane that will be going away. And a key question that we know needs to be asked and we're told by the university will be asked is, those people that are in those lots today, where do they live and where are their cars coming from? And if in fact, we know that... And if in fact, we know that Roper Lane, as was described, which now permits vehicular traffic, is going to be closed for good reason, it's not wide enough. You couldn't have vehicles going back and forth, you couldn't have the buses going there the way you'd need to. There was discussion about another road that would go from Western Way up to Prospect at a later stage in the project. We would encourage the university and the municipality to think about, maybe that could be done sooner rather than later, so that people could begin using that as a way to get to the parking garage and not go down Murray Place, Fitz Randolph, and so on and so forth. Other area of great concern to the community has to do with, as was pointed out also, the flow of cars out onto Faculty Road at certain times of the day is going to be much higher in the future than we see today. So the question is, what's going to happen at the intersections of Faculty Road and Washington Road, Faculty Road and Fitz Randolph, Faculty Road and Harrison Street? We know that when it's this hour of the day, it's not a problem. But what will happen on a regular basis as this occurs? So these things have to be understood, have to be considered, and have to be very realistic in terms of what's there. I'd like to just make one more point, and that is, the question about the tanks that are there came up. And thank you very much for making the point. Once again, they're not going to be white, they'll be something different. The question had to do with height. We know that 48 feet is the height of the parking garage, that's the height of the buildings over in the engineering quadrangle, the buildings that are there. Eighty feet is much higher than that. We know that the university was talking about, they'd like to see if it's possible to dig holes 20 feet down so that the actual height would be more like 60, yet to be seen. But we'd like the university to consider other alternatives, if that's possible. And one that came up in discussions I had with somebody this afternoon was, those two tanks that you see right there, which you can see is above Faculty Road, where Faculty Road is, if you go towards the lake, the ground drops off very seriously as it goes down to a level and then goes down again. Would it be possible to put those tanks down there so that they're not sticking up and being as much as visible as they are? I don't know if that's possible. I'm sure it's something that could be explored, maybe it has been explored, but I think exploring and understanding and considering alternatives is certainly worth doing. So I think those are the key points that I'd just like to share. And we very much look forward to working with the university and the planning board as these things become more crystallized and there are plans for the individual sections of it and what makes sense. I will say that the community that was there had lots of very good questions, interesting questions, creative ideas that the university was very receptive to. And at those two meetings, I should also point out, there were what, 12, 15 staff members from the university at each of those there, answering questions and so on. The university's been very engaged, that's what the community wants, that's what you want. This needs to be something that we look at as a community resource. Let's come up with something that's going to work for as many people as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Andrea Stein, S T I N E, and I live at 23 Murray Place. I want to also talk about the traffic. I've been coming to planning board meetings for the past 30 years for various university projects, and each time, we're told, there is an incremental increase in traffic, and it keeps adding up. And we do now have a very heavy traffic situation coming down our tiny little road, and it may not sound like there's a lot more coming, with 176 or 79 extra cars coming down here, but it all adds up. And I think that the planning board, or if it's not your responsibility, the town needs to say, when is enough, enough as far as, not saying the project can't go through, but that we've got to do a major traffic study and look at the pattern of where all the cars are flowing and, you know, do we have perhaps one-way streets, you know, in certain areas, or do we put, it has to be more than a speed bump or, you know, a traffic sign. And so I think the town has got to start thinking out of the box about the traffic situation before it isn't safe. And this is a perfect opportunity with such a major project. The other item I just wanted to quickly mention is that, you know, there is that pedestrian crossing near Ivy Lane on Washington Road where there's a flashing light and students can cross at will. And with, you know, a greater concentration of buildings right on Ivy Lane and on the eastern campus, more students from the west will be using that to cross over Washington Road. And it's also going to create more of a traffic backlog on Washington, and that's going to discourage people from driving up Washington and perhaps want to go down the local roads instead. I also think perhaps, you know, and I'm not a traffic expert, but, you know, perhaps there's a way to get some of these cars from that garage to go all the way up to Ivy and then to empty out onto Washington and make a left-hand turn to go out to Route 1, as opposed to using faculty, that that might be a good way. But that, again, that crosswalk is, again, dangerous and is an impediment to really rerouting the traffic.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tarek Shawbender, and I live on Hartley Avenue, it's 70 Hartley, which is directly, Tarek Shawbender, S H A H B E N D E R. Let's see if I can fix this thing. There we go. How's that? I guess I brought a bunch of notes, and I've been listening to all of my esteemed neighbors talk about the parking garage and the impact of traffic. And although I do agree, traffic will increase significantly, I think the town needs to look at these independent traffic studies that are being pursued and make decisions based on those independent traffic studies. And I think that, you know, the devil is in the details, and I don't think the university has all the details yet. I do appreciate their candor and their forthness in coming forward and explaining the concept. But I think in general, it's a good plan, but I believe they've lost their way, in particular on the tanks. Those tanks are huge. If you want a perspective of those tanks, go over to the dinky station, and you'll see a tank that's 60 feet high. And have someone take a picture of it, maybe put a person next to it, and take a look at the perspective. These tanks are going to be 80 feet high. They're going to represent over 10,000 square feet of footprint in wooded areas. They're going to be 60% of the size of the building that they're adjacent to, that big and long building called the Tiger Building. So when you look at the picture, I don't know if that's all done to scale, but the mathematics indicate they're going to be 62% of that building's size. They're huge. And I think if you go see them, you'd agree. So my genuine ask to the university is that they try to come up with a way to mitigate the visual I saw of these tanks, whether it's lowering them, whether it's encasing them in a beautiful building with Gothic structure and architecture, maybe it's an option, or moving them to a different location down towards the lake, down that big hill. But again, I would encourage everyone to kind of look at those tanks. And, you know, I suspect many, many, many years ago, when the tank builders in Elizabeth, New Jersey went to the council, they probably said, we're only going to build one. Okay? So is this the beginning of two tanks here and three tanks across the way in Plainsboro and two more tanks over by the dinky station? Or is it truly just two small tanks? So I'd encourage you to look at that aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Arup. I'm at 9 Princeton Avenue. I am very concerned about the tanks as well, because I'm trying to visualize what that is, and you sort of gave me an idea. The argument that it's too expensive to throw some dynamite or however you remove rocks from the university with such a big project like this, I'm sure that the university can find the money to dig that hole and stick those tanks down there.
Thank you.
My name is Clifford Zink, and I live at 54 Aiken Avenue in Princeton. And I'd like to commend the university for its long-term sustainability goals of being carbon neutral by 2046. That's a great model for all of us. What we've heard is a lot of concern about the traffic. What I've been thinking about is, we're looking at this current plan, and we're talking about replacing the existing parking, which is being used by existing facilities at the university. And there's going to be 179 additional spaces in that garage. But I'm wondering, what about all the development that the university is considering on Ivy Lane and Western Way? And what is going to be the scale of those buildings? How many square feet are going to be in the new engineering building and the new environmental center next to it? And how many parking spaces are those facilities going to need? And how much additional traffic are those facilities going to generate? So you've heard a number of people in the neighborhood talking about the impact of potential traffic with the additional parking spaces all concentrated on faculty. But what about, you know, so I'm suggesting that when a traffic study is done, or even looking at parking analysis, that the university needs to plug into the occasion its ambition for the new engineering building and the new environmental center next to it, so that we have a holistic view of the long-term traffic impact and the long-term parking requirements. Several people have talked about the scale of the tanks. So I've been thinking, when you drive into Princeton down Washington Road, you know, you can see Uris Hall, which is the tall building on Washington, and you can see Cleveland Tower, you can actually see Cleveland Tower from Route 1. The location of these tanks is on one of the highest elevations, you know, along the lake, if not the highest. I think you're going to see these two tanks sticking up when you're on Route 1. And so various people have said, we would really appreciate for the university to take a look at those tanks and to see how they can mitigate the visual appearance of those tanks. Someone had a suggestion of looking at putting the tanks in the low area where the current retention basin is, and maybe the retention basin can be expanded slightly without ruining the site where the new nursery school is. I'm not sure down the hill would work, but I think it would be great if the university looked at mitigating the height of those tanks. I've also had some correspondence with Kristen today, and I applaud the university for being so open, having community meetings, answering questions, being very open with as much information as they have now. One question I have is, the heat pumps that are going to be inside the Geo Exchange building, you know, how much noise are they going to make? You know, I'd like to get some information from the university on the level of noise, because I think that would be something that the neighborhood would be interested in. And then lastly, whenever the traffic, new traffic impact is looked at, the parking garage and all this development that's going to take place on Ivy Lane is going to require an increase in the use of Tiger Transit. And again, the university deserves credit because it is in the process of looking at its whole transportation system. And I had conversations with Kim Jackson, who's the transportation person at the university. And the university is looking into the possibility of electric buses. And any of us who have driven behind a Tiger Transit bus going up Washington Road and listening to that diesel engine pumping all those fumes out, and now we're going to have increased Tiger Transit in the neighborhood, eight times per hour, I think one of the studies says, the Tiger Transit is going to be accessing the garage. So I'd really encourage the university to take a very strong step towards implementing electric buses, as it's in the process right now of doing its transportation plan. And I think they're open to that, and I think the more electric buses we can have and, you know, get rid of the diesel buses, that would be great. And hopefully, the town of Princeton will also look at its next purchase of a bus for the freebie will be an electric bus. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Sedgwick, S E D G E W I C K. I'm a professor at the university, and I live at 139 Broadmead. I'd also like to speak about the 80-foot tanks. I agree with the last speaker that there's a real concern that that would be the new face of the university. As you come down Washington Road, you're going to see 80-foot tanks, not the beautiful Gothic towers of the university. Also, I'd like to point out that it was mentioned that it would be very expensive to dig down through the rock. Actually, Jadwin Jim goes down six stories. And actually, there's plenty of room on the other side of Jadwin Jim where these tanks might be located. So I definitely urge the university to look at other opportunities for putting these types of facilities that would not mar the historic view of the university for the whole community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Are there any other questions from members of the board? Mr. Cohen?
Just one more thought I'm going to throw out about the tanks. If the ratio of height to diameter is crucial to get the proper stratification, I'm curious whether if you had four tanks that were, say, 60 by 60 instead of two that are 80 by 80, whether you could get the same capacity but have less of a height. So have them take a look at that.
Okay, we'll look at that also.
Also, there've been a few references to the 48-foot height of the top parking level. And I'm wondering whether that's the height to, like, the drive surface of the top level or to the top of the place, the structure that goes up higher than the parking?
It's the parking level itself, so above that would be the parapet of the top level. And then above that would be the elevator overrun. So you're right, that would go up taller. I don't have that height.
Another roughly 20 feet?
Probably.
Okay.
And there's also, hopefully, one day, solar panels above that as well.
Closer to 10 or 15 feet.
No, no, it's probably 20.
I should not laugh. Well, seeing no other comments from the public or from members of the board, I will thank you.
Yes, and I would also...
We look forward to seeing, just one more quick question. I assume that with this garage, you will have generous capacity for electric vehicles?
Yes, yes.
Approximately, when do you expect to come back with an application? Is that fair to ask, or?
So, you know, if you ask me that question every month, there's usually a different answer. There's different projects that are further along in the design, we're envisioning the parking to be one of the first components, so we'll probably come in with the parking lot, the traffic study, all of the information related to that as the first, you know, the first project to jump on board. Don't hold me to it, but that's sort of where things are falling out, are planned out this year, and we hope to come in soon. But, you know, part of this process of bringing a concept plan is also to listen to what the board has to say and take your comments seriously, and to listen to the neighbors. So we have to look at and explore a few things here. So it always takes a little time, so it's hard to predict. It's probably going to be sometime this year, you know, since we're early in the year, but the exact date, you know, we've been asked to give estimates, and we put some numbers and dates out there, but realistically, it's hard to predict. We have to, you know, do a little bit more study, consolidate some more information, and when the time's right, we'll... and when the time's right, we'll be back, but...
Okay, well, you heard the overwhelming concerns are traffic and the storage tanks, and I would, I thought the suggestions and comments about taking into account the broader expansion picture in the general vicinity with engineering and environmental science, if you can make an attempt to factor those in with the...
That's all going to be part.
It's all part of the traffic study?
That is all going to be part of the traffic study.
Okay, great.
Yeah, there's a lot of elements, a lot of study involved. We've kind of simplified a few things here, but that's definitely going to be part of the study.
But also, just to clarify, this garage is sized for the growth that we anticipate, that we're planning for on Ivy Lane, Western Way, for the new environmental studies buildings and the seas, so those are accommodated in their calculations for this need.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we really appreciate your time and time of the community.
Thank you.
Take a very short break.
Yeah, they should be building a campus. They should build on the Mickey Lake. My two cents.
Try pressing the button.
It's a minor site plan with variances. Michael, do you want to walk us through this one?
Thank you.
If I may, before Michael starts, carry a proof publication and service in order?
Yes, the proof is in order.
The board has jurisdiction. Michael, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, and if you could mark as an exhibit, what's up on the board as Exhibit PB1?
All right, this application is a minor site plan and variance application to allow for additional seating in a retail space in a mixed-use, well, commercial building with retail on the first floor and office space above. Just to give you some orientation, the property in question is located on the former campus of the Princeton Medical Center, which has been redeveloped in recent years. The site, it's actually two buildings on the property. One is number 281 Witherspoon Street, which is on the corner of Witherspoon and Henry. Henry's to the north, Witherspoon is to the west. To the east of the site is the existing parking garage structure, and then to the south is the Avalon Bay residential development. The second building is where the retail space that we're talking about this evening is located. It's number 277 Witherspoon Street. It actually has two restaurant spaces, one forward that's towards Witherspoon Street and the area that we're talking about this evening for TA Restaurants doing business as Elite Five is a rear section to the east going towards the parking deck. The request is to allow for thirty-six additional seats, which would bring the total, oh, first of all, let me back up a little bit. The approved amount of seating for the restaurants for this particular space was twenty-four seats based on the existing, the site plan that was approved when this building was constructed a few years ago, and also the other tenant, the other restaurant tenant. They would like to go from twenty-four seats to sixty, so it's an increase of thirty-six seats, which requires a parking variance because the seating is based on the number of parking spaces, real or theoretical. The applicant will get in a little more detail about that. So they need to demonstrate that that much seating makes sense here. They're talking about having both inside, interior seating as well as seasonal outdoor seating for the restaurant. What else? The zone is in the R.O. Retail Office Zone, it's a permitted use. And as I told you, there's a mix of uses all around. Of course, there's the residential neighborhood with some first-floor commercial spaces right across Witherspoon Street to the west. You've got residential along Henry. You've got a commercial lot right on the corner of Henry and Witherspoon, and you have the Avalon Bay, which is a high-density, multifamily development to the south. And the existing parking structure services, all of these uses, the two buildings on the subject premises as well as Avalon Bay.
Okay. And just for the record, that's the site, what is PB1 is the site plan and the site plan site, correct?
Right, and I added this section, I don't know if you can see it, but the lower building, it's to the east, it's this rear section is where this proposed, the restaurant is requesting additional seating.
Okay, questions for Michael?
Just to, just make sure that I'm understanding this right, the 277 restaurant that we also heard in application for increased seating some months ago, this is not like a piece of that restaurant that was broken off? This has always been a second, separate restaurant space in the ground floor of this building?
That's my understanding, is that correct? Yes, sure.
Okay, any other questions for Michael?
Just a, excuse me, just a clarification, and you may have said this and I missed it, but the sixty seats is inclusive of outdoor seating, right? So are they, is that correct? And if so, it's the, yeah, so the indoor, you're looking for an increase in indoor seating from twenty-four to forty-seven?
I think I made that more confusing than it had to be. The increase, they want to go to a total of sixty seats. Forty-seven would be interior seats, and then thirteen outside, weather permitting. Those are the totals that they want to hit.
Okay, and anyone else? Questions for Michael? All right, if there's nothing at this point, why don't we hear from the applicant?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Allison Cassetta from the firm of Prime and Tuvell, appearing on behalf of the applicant, which is TA Restaurant LLC, doing business as Elite Five. Mr. Le Place made my job easier by summarizing the application, so I won't repeat what he said. I will confirm that of the sixty proposed seats, forty-seven are interior and thirteen are outdoor seasonal seats. I know that's kind of a strange breakdown. The forty-seven was arrived at by building code requirements. There has to be a certain spacing per the number of seats, and that's how we got to forty-seven. So we are requesting a variance because the increase in seating would increase the overall parking requirement for the two buildings to two-hundred-and-eighteen spaces, and we're proposing to continue using the existing one-hundred-and-eighty-six parking spaces in the adjacent garage. I just want to note that we had originally calculated the requirement at two-hundred-and-seventeen, but we'll defer to the board's consultants who calculated two-hundred-and-eighteen. So if you hear any of us refer to two-seventeen, it's just because we prepared for the hearing before reviewing their reports, but we're not disputing that. So the overall shortage would be thirty-two spaces. Again, two-hundred-and-eighteen required and one-hundred-and-eighty-six provided. And the requirement of two-hundred-and-eighteen takes into account all of the other uses in the two buildings, including the former Two Sevens Restaurant, which, as was noted, this board previously approved for an increase in seating to one-hundred-and-eighty-one. After that approval was granted, Two Sevens closed, but we did account for it in our analysis, knowing that either they might reopen, or as has happened since, a different restaurant would open there. And so all of our numbers take into account that approved seating increase. They don't count the previous number of seats in there. So based on all of that, the deficiency when this board approved the Two Sevens increase was twenty-three spaces, and this application would increase the deficiency to thirty-two, as calculated by the board's consultants. One other housekeeping matter, on September thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, the County of Mercer issued an exemption letter confirming that this application did not require site plan review by the county. The board was copied on that letter, but I have a couple of extra copies in case you need them. With that said, I understand our proof of notice was found to be adequate, so our first witness will be a principal of the applicant, who will tell you a little bit about the operations at the restaurant.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name for the record.
Tony YU.
And Tony, can you first confirm for the board that you're at the restaurant on a daily basis to oversee the operations?
Yes, I'm there seven days a week.
And do you have any prior experience with restaurants before this one?
Yes, I've been in the restaurant business over twenty years.
And you previously owned and operated another one, correct?
That's correct, I'm in New York, New Jersey.
And this restaurant, Elite Five, what's the date that it opened at the property?
October sixteenth in two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. And what kind of food is served there?
We serve sushi and a grill.
And is everything prepared on-site?
That's correct, everything's prepared on-site.
Okay. And what are your hours of operation? And what are your hours of operation?
11:30 to 9:30 at weekdays, but weekends just 11:30 to 10 o'clock.
And since you've opened at the property, what would you say is your busiest time of day?
Mr. Yu, could you speak up a little more, get a little closer to the mic?
Sure. The busiest time is actually nighttime, just the weekends, but the lunch is pretty slow. So right now, it's just the Saturdays are pretty busy, Saturday nights, actually.
But on an average day, whether it's a weekday or a weekend, would you say dinner is much busier than lunch?
That's correct, lunch is not very busy at all.
And how many employees do you have working at the restaurant?
On the busiest day, we have about 11 employees, but the slowest day, maybe about seven, six to seven staffs.
So the maximum that you would have there at one time would be 11?
That's correct.
Okay. And do all of your employees drive to work or do they arrive differently, some of them?
No, actually, most of them are walking, walking distance, since they are local. Couples, actually, they call pool together.
And the ones that do drive, do they park in the garage?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And as far as parking for customers, you offer to validate the tickets for them in the garage?
That's correct, we do offer two-hours validations for the customers.
And has it been your experience that the majority of customers need the validation, don't need the validation, a combination of both?
Actually, it's a little bit of both. From what I see, actually, most of customers are just the walking distance. I think that's just the coach of Princeton. People just like to go to dining with, just walk, and then some, they actually do drive.
Have you ever had an issue where a customer tried to park in the garage, but was unable to?
No, never.
And how about deliveries? Can you tell the board the frequency of your deliveries?
The vendors, actually, we do, it depends, mostly twice a week for the fish, like me, maybe once a week, and produce about twice a week, and, you know, they all have like an unloading zone area, so.
So they don't need to go into the parking garage, correct?
No, they don't need to go.
And how about trash removal? How is that handled?
Well, there are actually two, there's a hallway in two buildings, in between two buildings, they have like rollers, so they actually can just push out the trash cans and then.
And then is it picked up by a private hauler?
As a waste management, so is that private, yeah.
Right, so not a municipal truck?
No, no.
And can you?
Can I just remind you to speak right into the mic? It's just the acoustics in here are tough.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Right on top of it.
Okay.
And can you tell the board a little bit about why you're proposing the seating increase?
Well, I think to serve customers better, you know, the warm, I mean, the outside seating is a, you know, popular feature to have, and then also based upon my previous experience, the restaurants like this kind of restaurants actually would be more successful if they have a larger scale, and also based upon the quality of the food that we serve, a larger number of seats makes sense from a business perspective.
Thank you. And can you confirm that you're not proposing to expand your space or make any other changes to the actual building structure?
No.
And also, if you would confirm that your current hours and number of employees will not change as a result of the proposed seating increase?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you. Those are all the questions that I have for Mr. Yu.
Board, do you have questions, anyone?
I just have a comment. I think, I think it's nice to have an opportunity for outdoor seating in this location, just because it's sort of a growing area for retail, for, you know, for commerce and, you know, it's, it makes it more friendly and, I don't know, I think it's a great addition, especially in the summer months.
Thank you.
Thanks. David?
I don't know if you have any idea about this, but are these buildings pretty fully leased or is there a lot of vacant space in them?
No, at this point, all the spaces are fully occupied.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would just like to say, what I typically say is that I feel like, you know, there's no reason that this applicant should be in front of the board to get a parking variance for, you know, adding a few more seats. And I think that we're, you know, basically catering to car culture, and I think that, I don't know if, you know, we can change the ordinance that requires this, but I think that that's the direction we need to be going in, so we don't have to see these people and they don't have to pay to, you know, do all this, this work.
I totally agree, and I'm glad to know that we are moving in that direction, at least in the center of town, hopefully soon.
Well, you've said it before, and I think we really should pay more attention to this comment because it happens again and again, so thank you for reminding us. Anybody else have anything? All right, if there are no further comments and no further discussion, anyone? No? Go ahead.
I just want to say that as part of the permit parking task force work over the past year, I've actually been to this parking garage during regular business hours, and it's embarrassing how empty it is. So I just want to reassure the board, if anybody had any doubt, that there is so much excess capacity in proximity to this restaurant that, like, you know, in reply to Zenon, if there were a shortage of parking, I might disagree with you, but in this case, there's just no question that it's not an issue.
All right, if, any further comments, or are we ready for a motion? I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Have I come in, anyone? Okay. So, do you want to repeat the motion, please? There was, Tim?
My, I think my motion was to open public comment, but no, I, no, I.
All right.
I amend my motion to open public comment.
Okay.
And seeing no one approach the microphone, I'll move approval.
All right, and there was a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, do you want to call the roll on that, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Pitt?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Larny?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Wow. I told my kids 10 o'clock.
Yes.
Yeah, those tailgating things is fantastic.
Yeah.